City Council Meeting for Tuesday, April 2nd, 2019 to order. Can we please stand for the Pledge Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All council members are present minus Councilman Paul Burgley. He did notify Ms. Wood and myself that he would be absent. Do you have a proclamation for the Week of the Young Child?
A man. Adopt the agenda.
I'm sorry?
Adopt the agenda, please. There are no agenda modifications at this time.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda.
A motion from Councilman Lundin to adopt the agenda and a second by Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. All right, moving on to the proclamations for the Week of the Young Child. We do have a bit to reach for that, whereas many local organizations in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Child are celebrating the Week of the Young Child, April 8th to April 12th. And whereas these organizations are working to improve early learning opportunities, including early literacy programs that can provide a foundation of learning for the child in Isani, Minnesota. And whereas teachers and others who make a difference in the lives of young children in Isani, Minnesota deserve thanks and recognition. And whereas public policies that support early learning for all children are critical to young children's futures. Therefore, I, Jeff Johnson, Mayor of the City of Isani, do hereby proclaim April 8th to April 12th, 2019, as the Week of the Young Child and encourage all citizens to work to make a good investment in early childhood in Isani, Minnesota. Do I have an approval for City Council minutes?
Make a motion to approve.
Approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Lundin to approve City Council meeting minutes and a second by Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Announcements. Committee of the Whole, Tuesday, April 16th at 5:00 p.m. City Council meeting, Tuesday, April 16th at 7:00 p.m. Planning Commission meeting, Tuesday, April 16th, immediately following the council meeting. And there is a Park, Recreation and Culture Board meeting, Tuesday, April 23rd, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. Business items. Fire Chief Al Jankovic for the Annual Update. Chief, if you don't mind stepping up to the podium.
Did you all receive a copy of our annual report? I am not here, I'll get them. Pass these around. All right. Thank you, Mayor Johnson, Council, for allowing me time tonight to go over our annual report. I'm not going to read it word for word, but I would like to highlight a few areas and explain some things so that we're clear on everything. The first report on the first page is a list of all of our firefighters. This whole report is as of December 31st, 2018. So as of year end last year, this list of names are current firefighters. What I did with the years of services, I rounded it down. So if a member had 11 months of service, they did not yet have one complete year, so they show us a zero. All this added up, our total years of service at the end of last year was 140. Our average years of service between all of our current members was six. The next page shows some trending 2018 fire calls. We responded to 979 total calls in our coverage area last year. The pie chart breaks it down by the different entities that own the fire district essentially and which we service. Shows, you can probably figure it out, Athens, we responded to 110 calls, Bradford, 162, 451 in your city of Isani, so on and so forth. 14 calls were mutual aid where we assisted our neighbors. The bottom chart shows some run count history, starting at 724 runs in 2011 and slowly rising up to our 979 last year in 2011. The next report, as shown in the yellow box on top, is our incident types district wide. So this is our entire fire district's run detail. It's broke down by incident type. Every time we go on a run, we report it to the state of Minnesota. This report is ran from that reporting system, which shows, for instance, we responded to 56 fires, which totals 5.7% of our total incidents in 2018. The big one is, as usual, is rescues, which was 738 runs last year, which is 75.4%. I won't read through all of those, but the next report shows our service area, which is broke down by section for each of the townships and the city in entirety. It shows the estimated population from the assessor's office as well as the valuation for those sections of which we service. A total of 157 square miles. The total amount of valuation for the city is $435,556,000. That is important to us because that adds weight to our formula to calculate how much the city contributes towards our budget annually. So we take the, just briefly, we take the $435 million and compare it to our total valuation, which comes up with a ratio. We use that ratio to determine how much of that total budget the city contributes towards. The map on the bottom is a sketch of our coverage area, so you can see that it covers part of Spencer Brook, part of Bradford, et cetera. Isani Township, the entire township of Oxford, all of Athens and part of Standard. The next report, the next page is our financials as of December 31st, 2018. Our 2018 budget was $606,793. We had a great year for grants last year. The big one is from FEMA Assistance to Firefighters Grant. We were awarded some new air packs, breathing packs for firefighting, totaling $251,072. We also received some money from the state of Minnesota for training. Training from East Central Energy and the Minnesota State Fire Department Association awarded us some training dollars as well. Donations was also a good year for us, $18,553.13. $17,753.13 of that was from the Firefighters Rodeo Association. Long Lake Lutheran Church, $650 and then $150 in miscellaneous donations. Services, we were able to collect on 11 fire calls at $250 apiece, totaling $2,750. Total income last year between our budget, our donations and our grants is $893,707.47. That net an annual income of $3,550. That net, that money that we, it feels like we made it, we earned it, is in our fire call savings account, which we'll use to purchase turnout here in future. You'll see that we have a few different bank accounts that we use to keep our money separate. Flagship Bank Checking Account is our normal day-to-day checking account, $237,932.18 was our ending balance. You'll see our fire call savings account is $11,638.61. On the next column, you'll see that we have $350,000 approximately at Members Cooperative Capital Replacement Certificates. That is our capital equipment money, as well as the Falcon National Bank. So combining these CDs and the money that's still in our checkbook as of this report, we have around $500,000 to purchase a new fire engine, which we are going to be ordering here in the next few weeks. We hope to take delivery before the end of the year. And we will be able to pay cash for that because we have saved our capital equipment money up for that. We also have a water rescue savings account, $615.76. That's mostly donations that build that account up. That's not services, that's donations from people that we earmark for water rescue.
So Chief, just got a quick question for you.
Sure.
So, do you guys have any way to collect on these bills you send out to people?
We currently invoice in-house for collections.
You only collected on 11, $250. How many people did you bill for close to 10,000 last year?
I don't have the number of thousands, I'm sorry.
Okay. So that's just sort of what I'm trying to figure out because we're billing people and we can't collect them, then why are we billing people?
That's a good question to bring to our fire board.
We've had that discussion more than once.
At length, we have.
Does all does create havoc.
Can we move on?
Move on, Chief.
Yep. Capital assets, page seven. This is a list of all the equipment we own, which is all of our equipment. We own it all debt-free. Broke down by station. Station one is the only building that we do not own. Station two, equipment is in station two and station three. I think that's pretty self-explanatory. The next page is specific to the city of Isani. This is broke down to show like the last incident type report, how many fires and medicals and hazardous conditions, et cetera, that we have responded to in the city itself. 451 total runs issued here in the city of Isani.
Chief, just to explain to everybody, each run gets billed exactly the same, whether it's a fire that takes mutual aid from everybody to one medical that takes one car, correct?
Incorrect.
How is that wrong, Matt?
Are you talking in regards to a service fee or towards our budget calculus?
As to the formula for the budget and how it's billed back to the city.
Oh, then you are correct. In our budget, and we'll talk about that, we might as well flip to the last page and we'll go over that at the same time. This is our budget for 2019. It shows on the fire district's 2019 budget is $605,500, excuse me. The city, after running our formula, will pay $57,811.56 quarterly towards that, which annually equates to $231,246.24. So the city pays for 38% of the budget and we respond to 47% of our calls are in the We use those two numbers to calculate these contribution amounts, as I stated before. We compare the amount of runs in a city to the amount of runs in entirety. And that comes up with a ratio, which then essentially weighs the formula more or less towards each entity. So the more valuation that's in one entity or the more runs that are in each entity will weigh the formula to change the amount of contribution that each entity pays towards our budget to make it whole. So, yes, each run that we respond to in the city adds weight to that formula to minutely increase the amount of contribution the city pays towards our budget, which is on a five-year average as well. So if there's a bad storm in the city and we had a lot of fire calls in the city due to that storm, the next year we wouldn't see a drastic change in the amount due because it's a five-year average to try to slow down that fluctuation. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any questions that pertain to Chief Jankovic's annual update?
You guys do a good job, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief. Dallin Street Discussion.
Mayor and Council, good evening. So as directed at the last council meeting, staff, myself, reached out to some businesses that are long-standing and to see if they had any concerns or any comments that they wanted to make regarding the flow of traffic along Dallin, as well as if there was to be no parking assigned to one side of the street. What you have included in your memo before you is some of the comments that they made.
So what business was all in favor?
That was Federated.
What did Rendezvous say?
Rendezvous said what was in the second bullets, wanted to know why it had not been addressed when there was curb and gutter, put into the street approximately 2004, which I did not confirm, if that's what he had thought. Wondered if there had been any complaints or issues in the past and then wanted to know if other streets within the city of the same width would be looked at as well. Those were his comments. He did not say if he was for or against it really.
Well, there's obviously a problem because it is getting pretty tight. As you can see from Fire Chief Jankovic's comments too, there's been many times it's only one-way traffic through there. I also feel that the Railroad Avenue, one by the VFW was, was it all city yellow glass, wherever it is down there, they parked their semi-trailers along there. That's above or get through there too.
There's many issues I think we need to address within the city, but...
But I'm just referring to that, there's other areas too that I feel there's issues.
I would not disagree with that. So what's the full width of Dallin?
34 feet back to curb. Back to curb.
What's the width that it should be to have parking on both sides? Jason, you want to answer that?
I guess, you know, for a city standard, we have, a lot of our residential streets are narrower than that, but we don't have no parking, you know, resolutions preventing parking. For a state aid route, you know, when we design our recommended road widths on those types of routes, it would be 38 feet for parking on both sides.
Because I'm just confused here. It says new roads per fire code should be 26 feet to allow for maneuverability. And right below it, it says Dallin is 34 feet.
Councilmember Lawrence, sorry, that was my comment, just to give information. That first bullet regarding the fire code was from Mr. Jankovic and I was just stating that, just so you're aware, Dallin is 34 feet.
So what's the 26 feet have, what's that?
That is per fire code, what Al has stated, to allow for maneuverability. Fire codes states that the road should be, the road width should be at least a minimum of 26 feet wide.
So if two cars are parked on either side of that, it's definitely not the 26 feet. If you get cars on both sides of Dallin, it would not be the 26 feet.
Mayor and Council, excuse me, I'm not here, but it is very possible. I just took that from an excerpt from his email, that it might be, that should be the driving lane to be able to have, to be able to get that truck through there.
Correct. And if there's, and if there's cars on both sides of Dallin Avenue, there's not 26 feet.
That makes sense.
That would make sense.
I guess, if I can just chime in, the city minimum standard is 26 feet wide face-to-face, total street width.
When you went out and measured that, Mr. Cook, was there cars on either side of that road?
Yeah, there's.
You didn't let fans measure a car, did you?
No, but I guess what I'm, what I'm getting at is, there are a lot of residential streets within the city that are only 26 feet wide back-to-back or face-to-face of the curb. And that's...
And allowing parking on both sides.
And allowing parking on both sides because we don't have parking restrictions, you know, on very many streets within the city.
Maybe what we ought to do with this then is just put it on a Cal meeting so we can discuss this a little further, is what I would recommend, if the council's okay with that.
I think we should have to start looking at all the streets that are narrow.
I would agree.
And what we can do is look at that, maybe look at all of them.
If we have roads that are 26 feet, this road's not narrow.
No.
Right.
Right.
So...
But either that or we should be not parking on one side of the straight city line.
One thing is, you look at a residential stretch of houses, there's no businesses there, people aren't going to use that as a transfer area to get from here to, where the Heritage Boulevard to Main Street. That, any of these streets are going to be a hub, direct connect. So I mean, that's, you got to look at that and take that into consideration too.
I looked at this street in particular because I not only had complaints from residents, but I did spend four hours at the beginning of my term in a plow truck. And I was shocked that that plow driver didn't take a mirror off how tight it was on Dallin. I mean, he literally had to slow down to, I could have got him crawled faster than that truck went. So, and then a week later, I saw a fire truck pass through there. Again, they had to crawl through.
Would it make sense for seasonal parking restrictions more than summer?
I guess, we're still battling the fire truck issue then. But, I mean, seasonal would help, I guess, 50%. But we're still battling fire trucks getting through there. I did see an ambulance, I didn't follow it, but I did see it. It turned down there and it was pretty tight through there even. I'm just thinking that we don't want to slow our emergency responders anymore so that they already have to. Our police cars are obviously making it through, they're small enough. But ambulances, fire trucks, it's not good.
And also the college has been using that for detour if they have to put it on.
Correct.
Or full or two.
I say we move this to Cal if council's okay with that. We'll discuss it a little further. Okay with that, gentlemen? Lexi Paul's discussion continued. Before we move into this, I have something to say that pertains to the training of the Isani Police Department. The Isani Police Department has a history of obtaining innovative trainings that are above and beyond the Minnesota Peace Officer Standards and training, minimum training requirements in addition to professional training. Currently, there are four Isani Police Officers that have earned master's degrees in criminal justice field of their own. The Minnesota Post Board requires to attend 16 hours of training per year. In 2018, the full-time Isani Police Officers averaged a total of 75 hours each, thus succeeding the 16 hours required. Some of the specialized training of the officers received was hazardous materials, immigration law, crisis intervention, protecting vulnerable adults, school safety, mental health response, serving those with autism spectrum disorders, emergency first aid. Furthermore, in the, in this Isani Police Department, they have prioritized training of their officers to the higher standards possible. A few examples of the additional advanced certifications officers in the city of Isani have received in the past two years, 147 hours of BCA Investigation Certifications, two officers completed 80 hours of BCA Advanced Leadership Certifications, 40 hours of Minnesota Chief of Police Leadership Academy, 24-hour advanced school resource officer certifications, 40 hours of International Police Mountain Bike Association Bike Patrol Certification, 40 hours associations training officers of Minnesota Field Training Officer Certificates. The Isani Police Department is dedicated in providing the community with highly trained professional officers, and these officers all show strong dedication to advancing education and training. With that being said, I will admit I misspoke, or what I should have said last meeting we had was, a council member directed that we possibly didn't have enough training in our department? Well, I looked further into it and by golly, I think we exceed that. With that being said, is why I brought the Lexi Poll discussion in place. With that being said, I know Ms. Brooks, we ask you to look further into the Police Department and see what the officers thought of bringing Lexi Poll to the city of Isani, if you could give those out, please?
So I did have a chance to talk to all the officers, whether it was text, email or in person, and I feel like a lot of the officers who haven't experienced Lexi Poll have a lot of questions as to how the implementation of it would work and how it would be directed for city of Isani particularly. So I did indicate who said yes, no and unsure, but there's a lot of unanswered questions and I do feel that if we had clear answers for them, it would be more of a unanimous decision.
So we had eight officers that said yes to this Lexi Poll, three that said no and four that were unsure. And if we could give them clear answers to this Lexi Poll, your opinion is those four were probably yeses as well?
And majority of the officers I did talk to also recommended that we wait on the Lexi Poll decision until we have a chief in place.
I would entertain for this to be budgeted for the 2020 with a motion for discussion. Furthermore, in a Cal meeting, see if this is feasible to budget for 2020. I'll second that. I have a motion by myself and a second by Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same side. Three to one, motion passes.
Also, I'd like to respond to your comment about we speaking about training for our office and our department.
I didn't say your name, sir.
Well, it was directed at me.
It was not.
My comment about training was specific for one specific incident that we can't discuss in a public meeting.
Okay.
So it wasn't in our department as a whole. So don't politically spin items for your benefit.
I wasn't directing that at you, Councilman Lawrence here, and quite frankly, you're out of order. Number four, policy for video recording, City Council meeting discussion continued. Ms. Wood? There wasn't going to be any discussion on this, we just thought we'd... Did we have anything to say on this, Ms. Wood?
Mayor and Council, this was an item that was discussed at Committee of the Whole last month on March 19th, I believe. And currently, it was discussed of what we currently do, which is YouTube at our regular City Council meetings. And as you can see in the memo before you, it does have what we have minutes for, which are required by state statute, as well as audio on our website that we post. And again, that YouTube for regular City Council meetings. We don't have anything in policy currently in regards to when we do use recordings, as well as the YouTube video option. And so that is what staff has prepared before you, as was discussed at the Committee of the Whole.
Staff, we need to be... I still think we need to be video recording the Committee of the Whole meetings.
I would make a motion to leave it as is.
I guess what Councilman Lawrence are saying with the Committee of the Whole, I don't see where that's a big deal if we record that. I don't see where that's an issue myself.
We don't have the staff capacity to do it.
You can lie with you.
It takes long enough for... It takes long enough for, I mean, if you were to see our current webpage that we have, it takes forever for Ms. Brooks to download our council meetings, let alone now she's got to do a Committee of the Whole.
And that's been defeated by going live on YouTube, and it doesn't take any extra staff time?
That's a huge liability.
There's no liability in a public meeting.
There's a lot of liability in a public meeting. Have you watched certain ones where, I will say your name on this one, where you've lashed out at quite a few people at these meetings?
Because we're being recorded on all these meetings.
Yeah, so.
Why are they being recorded? There's no.
So then if there was no live there, we couldn't edit maybe?
You can't edit, you can't edit a public meeting. There's no reason to edit a public meeting. If it's live, it's live. People are sitting here, it's live. There's no reason to edit it.
We're not going to have any further discussion on this. Either we can bring this to Committee of the Whole and keep talking about this until we're blue in the face, or we can leave it as is unless somebody else has another motion we can entertain?
I'll make a motion to keep it as is and add Committee of the Whole.
I have a motion to keep it as is and add Committee of the Whole by Councilman Collison. And a second by Councilman Lundin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? May. So it is a three to one, motion passes.
And Mayor and Council, just so staff is clear, it is to then YouTube at Committee of the Whole. Was that the motion?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
I've been in there's, I'd also like to state there's some staff, staff issues we should discuss at the next Committee of the Whole as well. So they can handle that.
Moving on, resolution for 2019 approving a special event permit application for the Walk for Life event.
Okay, Mayor and Council, we do have a Walk for Life event, which is being hosted by the Cambridge Pregnancy Resource Center and Lex Specialty Clinic. This is an event that I believe is their third annual. They are utilizing Bluebird Park, and it's a great event that's open to the public. And there will be a two-mile walk, which will be going along the Cambridge Iscany Bike Walk Trail. They have submitted all the applicable forms and payments that they need to for the special event, as well as a sign permit, a cleanup deposit fee, and the reservation of the Bluebird Park Shelter. Staff is recommending approval of this great event.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second. I have a motion to accept by Councilman Lundin and a second by Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? Four to zero, motion passes. Approval of the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve.
I have an approval by Councilman Lundin to approve the consent agenda, and a second by Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Four to zero, motion passes. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn by Councilman Lundin.
Second.
Second by Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? We stand adjourned.